Good morning, we'll call the meeting to order for the day. First item on our agenda is approval of today's agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Citizens to be heard, any citizens that would like to be heard on any item not on the agenda. Seeing non-approved minutes of September 1st and 8th, 2015 meetings.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Approved payment of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and the second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. First item is City of Glendon request to purchase tax forfeited parcels in the Stockwood Business Park Conditions 1 and 2. Denise Cecil, come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You brought the mayor with today, so we got.
Bring the big guys with me.
My name's Denise Anderson, I'm the city clerk for the City of Glendon, and this is my mayor,
Cecil Johnson, and I appreciate you having us this morning and entertaining. In your packet, I included a letter which I had wrote to Ms. Nancy at your auditor's office requesting that the city be able to purchase the attached parcels that are within the business development, the Stockwood Business Park. This business park was put together in 2007, and due to recession and a poor drafted developer's agreement, everything just went defunct. The city granted the developers a three-year deferral, and at the end of that three-year deferral, for the following three years, they have neglected to pay the taxes. In the meantime, the citizens of Glendon have paid, and I apologize, $638,877 out of the general fund to cover the GO bond for this development. The bond was issued in 2007 for the amount of $1,415,500. The residents of Glendon have shoulder a big responsibility for the last three years. They're talking $110,000 to $120,000 a year coming out of the general fund, which has cut back services and other necessities that the city needs. The city is looking forward, right now we've got some major projects going on, such as looping our water lines, we have Highway 10 coming through with reconstruction in 2017. In 2018, the county's Park Avenue will be completely reconstructed, and the city's going to have to shoulder responsibility for that also. So I would respectfully request that my commissioners would allow the city to purchase these parcels for tax forfeiture, and the reason I ask this is currently, the developers never finished developing, they did not install utility, electric lines, gas lines. The development has to have a three-phase service installed in order for our lift stations to work. Currently, these parcels are unsellable, they're unbuildable, because the city is unable to provide essential water and sewer services to these partials. So if someone were to buy the parcel, they couldn't build on it, because we can't allow them to, we can't provide services. The city contractually developed everything that the city was required to, the developers chose not to install the electric services. We have a quarter million dollar lift station and ponds in the development that will require some major work, they've been sitting dead for six, seven years, which you know, for equipment of that magnitude, to just sit and not be used, there's going to be some reconstruction that needs to be done on that. My mayor has contacted Excel Energy, and they came in, and the city will have to spend approximately $70,000 to $80,000 to finish this development, to install the three-phase electrical wires and gas service, which will be buried underground. In this particular development, we care not to have any overhead lines, in case there is a company that goes in with larger vehicles and trucks, so we don't have to deal with that safety issue, and will require approximately another $20,000 to $30,000 to bring those lift stations up and operational again. So the city right now is looking at approximately $111,000 to finish this development. That's asking our commissioners approval, so the city can purchase these parcels, so we can finish this development, so they're sellable, usable lots, put them back on the tax roll for the city, the school district, and the county. The City of Glendon is a member by adopted resolution of the Clay County Economic Development Authority, and we have contacted MetroCog, we need to create a comprehensive zoning ordinance. Before any of these lots are sold, this zoning ordinance will be in place. Currently, it's just kind of spot zoning, and my council members have agreed that the city does need a good comprehensive zoning ordinance, especially if we obtain Stockwood. We have a lot of cards in place, but until we can obtain these parcels, we can't move forward. And since the city needs to invest thousands of dollars yet to create viable sellable lots for tax purposes for our residents, I would like to ask the commissioners if they would consider that the city be able to purchase these parcels at a free or reduced charge. Questions?
Thank you Denise. Any questions for Denise?
Well, how is this going to affect the county? What's the cost of the county on this? Oh, there's Nancy here.
It's on the tax work list, so it would be actually, we put it up on our tax work sale, it would be done by bid, and it would be done by, because whatever the assessor's office puts on for value is where the bidding would start. I don't know that anybody personally would be interested in it, if they're also would have to invest all that money to put in the water and sewer and all that stuff, because it's, whatever we could get in the tax work sale, would be what we would be up.
Mr. Chair. My question is, the last paragraph in the letter talks about purchasing the parcels, which I understand would be in lieu of them going to forfeiture sale at the end of the year, but then it says with the understanding that Clay County will reimburse the city the tax amount due back to the city for the sale of the forfeited parcels. So how?
I'm sorry?
The refund of the tax due to the city?
Um.
How does that, that work, that concerns me, because the taxes that are due and owing here are quite substantial, so.
When a property goes forfeit, the taxes go away, the delinquent taxes.
Right.
Any money that you would recoup during the tax forfeit sale is distributed back to the city.
So the city's going to pay X amount of dollars that are all going to then be refunded back to the city?
Basically.
That was my question.
Okay, a follow-up to that, Nancy, the, when, if this process were to go forward, and they install the electrical that's needed, no, the sewer and water lines are in, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so they're actually in, but it's, so it's the, just the remaining electrical to make it all work. Once the lot is sold back, the specials go back on the property, don't they?
It would be up to the city to reassess them, and if they've already been paid for them, then of course they can't do that.
How would they have been paid for them if they're delinquent?
If through, if they're going to.
Through their purchase price?
Right.
Okay.
If I may, the city is not looking to make money on the property, we would just sell the lots for the assessed value.
Okay. So our decision is to whether to sell it at Glendon, or put it up for tax forfeiture sale, that's the question today.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is, is there a reason that the purchase would happen in late December, instead of, typically when we have people come before, we try to get that, the property transferred as soon as possible, is there a reason you would like it for late December?
We would like to wait until late December. Our financial advisor, David Drone, stated that it would be easier for our bookkeeping purposes when we receive our taxes in December, we could pay for the property then, and then I visited with Lori Johnson, she said she could reimburse us in January, so when February comes for our bond payments, the money is in the account for the city, and we would not have to take out a short-term note.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from these young people?
You said Lori said she could reimburse you, so how much would this cost? I guess that's back to my original question, what would the cost of the county to do this?
I'd, you'd have to ask Lori, actually. I don't know the, the number amounts between Lori and Denise there.
And that I do not know, she told me that the city will receive back a major portion for the taxes due, all but the county's administration fees.
But it would not be more than the purchase price, am I understanding that correct?
Correct.
Correct. So it wouldn't be more than we are receiving from the city?
May I, if I can, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
To get back on to Jenny's questions, the, I thought, I thought when, when a delinquent property was purchased, that there was a distribution to all governing entities, not just the city, but there would be to the county, and there would be to the school district.
There would be.
So that, there would be?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I, I don't know, that's the, so I don't know that it's, it would be costing the county anything, other than the fact that we might get a disproportionate amount on the sale, but we would have had, had the original owners paid for the tax.
Correct. So I think you have to balance that with, what would these properties get at?
Sale.
At sale?
Right.
And if you think that these properties are so in demand, that you're going to have, you know, quite a.
Or through the auction, we get more than what the city.
Right, because then the county would, would retain more of that percentage.
That's correct.
But, you know, that's what needs to be evaluated, how desirable are these properties, and especially with the city willing to make pretty substantial investments in what's not, the infrastructure that's not there right now.
Jenny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It seems to me, though, after sitting through those tax forfeited auctions, to place these properties back within the power of the city, who is willing to front money forward, we would do much better in the long run, having the city take care of this. Clearly, a developer had, had good wishes, but it's cost significant dollars to the people of Glendon.
I don't, I don't disagree with that at all.
Right.
I agree with that, I mean, but I just got, if we would put these up for sale, and no one bids on it, I mean, this city, and no one else bids on it, what happens then?
Next December, we would probably reduce the amount assessed value and put them out there again. Someone can purchase them over the counter in between the time for the amount that they were offered at the tax forfeit sale.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Board's wishes?
So what's the, what's the amount that the city is offering to pay for these?
There are two lots that have been sold, and one lot has been reassessed through the assessor's office.
I may have a follow-up question, those lots that have been sold, are those lots that you need to do upgrades to with the electrical as well, so a purchase was what happened, with the understanding that that was going to happen as well?
I am, I'm kind of late to this party. This lot, these two lots were sold, one has put a building on, with the understanding that they would not be provided sewer water.
Okay.
Until we could get electrical out to that lift station, there was no guarantees. The other lot was sold privately, before the, the properties went into tax foreclosure. What this gentleman had planned, I have no idea, but we had told the villager that we can't provide services, it's unbuildable.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the city's request to buy those lots.
Okay.
And Jenny, I read, do you have any, need anything else with the motion for any purpose, or?
I don't believe so, but I think it will require a resolution, I'll double check, and if it, it does require a resolution, I can draft that up for the board.
Okay. Motion, did we have a second?
Yeah.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, hopefully it all works.
This is the first hurdle, thank you, we have a long road to walk.
Well, good luck to you.
Take care every day.
Rhonda, come on up, we have renewed adoption of the 2015 through 17 Minnesota Merit Systems Equal Employment Opportunity and Affirmative Action Guidelines for compliance with Minnesota Rules 95750090.
It's a mouthful, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, well, for many, many years, Clay County Social Services has adopted the Minnesota Merit Systems guidelines for equal employment opportunity and affirmative action, so I'm, we do it every two years, and so I'm, before you, with the same request is to, for our agency. A merit system gives us two options, one is the county can choose to write their own EEO/AA plan and have it certified, or we can adopt the Minnesota Merit Systems plan as our own, and that's what we've done in the past, and that's just what I'm asking for us to continue to do. Darren has reviewed it, Darren is our liaison that we are required to identify within our plan, and it's worked out well for us, it's fairly standard and basic document. I don't know if that, if the whole document went out in the ma, in the board packet, but it's about a, oh, let's see, 35-page document that we adopt, yeah.
Oh, I'd like to read that.
All right. It is posted on our website, and we are required to post it throughout our agency as well, which we do, which we do do, and so with your approval, I would be submitting a letter to Minnesota Merit System indicating that the board has approved adopting the guidelines.
Mr. Chair, I move the requested motion at the bottom of the page to adopt the merit system.
I'll, I'll second that with a question, why do we do this every two years? I mean, has our affirmative action changed here, that we, we change our policy?
You know, the Department of Human Services will update some of the pieces within the document, they'll make sure that the rule numbers haven't changed, and the statutes haven't changed, and if there's some additional guidance, they'll provide that in here, so I think it's, I don't exactly know why, they put it out every two years, but my guess is just to stay on top of any changes.
Make work for you.
Mr., I do want to comment, I, you know, I'm going to support the, the motion, but the, I would like to say that, that being part of the Minnesota Merit System does come with its headaches, too.
It does.
We heard, we heard a little bit about that this morning in our pick meeting, so not all is rosy, but it's probably still the best to be part of it, so, I just wanted to mention that, so.
That is true.
Good point. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Rhonda.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Authorized execution of agreement for surveyor services. Mark Sloan, good morning, Mark.
Okay, recap a little bit here, for many, many years, Clay County appointed a surveyor, a county surveyor. Last year, we had some discussions in-house, when that appointment was expiring, and we decided we'd like to go a little bit different direction, to get a little different type of services for what we were looking, what our departments were needing. So we had some, many meetings, and we came up with a plan of what we were looking for, and we decided we were going to contract with a firm to provide us with surveyor services for all of our departments. In June, I was here, and we sent out a RFP to all the survey firms in the, in the county, and basically asking them, send us a proposal, what can you do for us? In July, we sat down and had an actual meeting, we invited all the survey firms we could find, and there was a really nice showing, and we had a nice discussion, and talked about a lot of different things, and after that, then we asked those firms that were interested to submit proposals to us. And in early August, we got five proposals, and we had a selection committee that we put together, and we sat down, went through the proposals, and figured out which one best fit the direction we were trying to go, and would match the needs that we had, and we narrowed it down to two firms, and we brought those two firms in, and actually had interviews with them, and talked to them about what they, they could do for us, and what we were looking for, and we had really good, good conversations with them. At the end of all of that, we decided we liked one firm better, so we had another committee meeting, we talked about what we'd learned, where we were going, and what our recommendation was, and that committee has, has agreed, which brings me to you folks. We have selected from all the firms that proposed, provided proposals to us, AE2S is the company, they have an office here in Moorhead, they've done some other work for us in the past, we've got a good track record of them, during the interview process, they had some good responses to all the questions we were looking for, and at the end of all of that, we have an actual agreement that we have put together. Jenny wrote it for us, that lays out what services they'll provide for us, what, how that's all going to work, and I am here today to ask that you sign the agreement, then we begin having a surveyor, a survey firm contracted to work for us.
Thank you. Questions for Mark?
So the, the contract, it, it all has to coincide with, with what we have budgeted for that service.
Right.
For the course of the year, correct?
Right.
It's not, it's not open-ended, where they're going to.
No, and the way, the way, the way the contract, and this is why the proposal was kind of laid out, is we're really looking for two different things. One was, we wanted a firm that could do remonumentation, because remonumentation's a really important thing for us, and that's what our county surveyor had done for us for many years. The other piece that we had been missing, and this is the thing we wanted to add, was we wanted to have a firm on tap that we could hire if we needed a survey firm to do stuff, and those, in most cases, those costs wouldn't be in our surveying budget, they would come from a highway project budget, or a plat review process budget, you know, there's other places, but the problem we'd had before is we never knew which firm to hire, you know, we were kind of stuck there, and that's one of the things we wanted to clear up with this contract, is now we've got a firm selected, we've got prices in place, all those things, so when we have a need for a surveyor, we call them up, they provide the service, we know what it's going to cost us, and, so yeah. And then as far as the remonumentation, that's where the, the budgeted item comes out of there. We've created a priority list of the section corners that we need remonumented, and what we'll do basically is work through those as best we can, and then we'll just stay within the budget, you know, we'll do as many as we can until the money starts running out.
Kevin?
And then I'm assuming, Diane, you've had an opportunity to see this as a, as a recorder to, are you okay with what you?
I'm part of the committee, so.
Okay.
Yeah, in fact, the agreement specifies that the project order for the remonumentation, project order will be determined by Clay County, and then communicated to AE2S, so as we follow that, and we're reaching our budget amount, then we would be able to say, no, we're done for the year, if we get to the, you know, we're hoping that we can get to that point, but I think Mark's comment about really adding a new piece to this surveying position is, is the really exciting thing about this, because up till now, our county surveyor was really only focused on the remonumentation program. This is going to allow us a lot more access and availability when we have those surveying issues come up, we'll have them, we know what their rates are, they're incorporated into the agreement, and so I think, was it a two or a three-year contract, I can't remember?
It's a three-year, and then it renews, if, if we all leave it be, it'll just keep renewing.
Right.
But any, either side, us or them, can withdraw with a 60-day notice, so.
60-day notice of termination, otherwise it's a three-year initial term to renew annually thereafter, as long as no notice is given.
Is, is there something in there that talks about the rates, then?
Yeah, if they're going to raise their rates, they need to give us a certain amount of notice, and then we, I think it was 60 days' notice.
Yeah.
Then we could choose to discontinue the contract, if we felt the rates were unreasonable.
Very good.
So.
Okay, board's wishes?
I'd move, I'd move approval of the hiring of AE2S.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Good work.
Dave, come on up. County engineer David Overball, approval of gravel crushing quotes, and approval of resolution to request a speed study from MinDOT.
The first item on the bid is kind of similar to what we did about a month ago, we let some, where we acquired some quotes for some gravel crushing on our Felton County pit. This is the same thing, it's only on our County 26 pit. We thought we had maybe only one last little crush in this area, I think it's probably going to end up possibly being, maybe a, a second one, a year or two down the road, but what we did is we, we figured out a certain dollar amount that we had budgeted, that we'd want to spend up there, and it was like right around $50,000, so we sent quote sheets out to the same contractors that we did last time, Turner Sand and Gravel ended up being the low quote, and there is being $2.84 per yard, for a total of just over $48,000, so what we're looking at doing is utilizing this gravel for our maintenance forces, and possibly going to utilize some of it for our maintenance graveling here this spring, so we've already got some material now put up, we can specify that in our special provisions this spring, and we wouldn't have to contract for crushing and hauling, it would just be hauling, so we got a little flexibility this spring to see how it's going to turn out.
Mr. Chair, that's all, then through the Highway Tracking Committee?
Maybe not specifically.
But we talked, we talked about.
Does it need to go through committee before?
No, we, no, we, we talked about it, and agreed that it would be good to put up for bids.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll move approval of appointing Turner Sand and Gravel the job.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries.
All right, my second item is an approval to request a speed study from MinDOT. What we typically do as we build some of our roads and reconstruct them, we take a look at how the demographics have changed, if there's been an increase of residential building, commercial building, and County Road 18, as far back as we could find, has always had like the 55 mile an hour speed limit, it's a small section of road, it ain't much more than a mile, in fact, it's probably just a hair under a mile, it's been recently annexed into the City of Moorhead, and we just weren't exactly sure, you know, what would be the appropriate speed limit, so, you know, it may be 40, 45, or the state could come out and do a speed study and find out that everyone's comfortable driving 55, and it may remain, so, but nonetheless, we just kind of thought, rather than putting up speed limit signs here, now that we've recently overlaid it, we'd like to request a speed study, and the way that that works, is we put together a speed limit resolution signed by the county board, they're pretty, it seemed like they're pretty busy, they don't, they don't happen like within a week or so, we may not get it till next spring, but nonetheless, we'd like to start the process and see what they find.
Questions about this?
When they, when they do that, do they, do they consider, now that it's within the. city limits, do they consider any future plans the city may have when they do that type of thing?
I think for the most part, they just-
It's what's current?
I think so. They mostly, mostly observe traffic, and what they do is, they find out what the current amount of cars are, how fast we're driving, and then they take the 85th percentile of that.
So, do they, do they take into consideration the significant usage of that thing during a portion of the year compared to, are they going to do this, are they going to do the speed study while the beat trucks are driving on it, or are they going to do it when they're not driving on it?
Yeah, that's a good question. I think what I'll do is, I'd like to write a little cover letter along with this.
I think it would be good.
Yeah.
Because if they're going to do the speed study in June and July-
Yeah, it's pretty quiet then.
You know, it's, it's a completely different road than it is in October, November, and December.
Yeah, that. No, I think I'll address that in my letter.
Okay.
This area that we're talking about, isn't that in the city limits of Moorhead?
I believe so, yes. Yep.
So, we control the speed limit in-
Still our road.
Yeah, I, yeah, it's our road. We control the speed limit of county roads in cities.
And that's kind of a little bit of a gray area, you know? The thing with limits typically by statute, I think 30 miles an hour. But there is other roads, like 34th Street, I think is 40 miles an hour. So, there's, there's other corridors a little bit higher. That's why it's, it's just a little different animal than we've had. The most recent thing we've done similar to this is County Road 7 and Highway 52 Village Green area. We worked with the city of Moorhead on that, too, and we weren't sure exactly how to post that. So, we asked for a study, and they came out and gave us some good guidance. So, it's a little similar to what we did in the Village Green area.
Well, I think it's a good idea, Dave. It's just, I just think it's important that it's, they recognize, I mean, there's a reason why that road is so big right now, and it's, and that's for the operation of the beat plant, and what transpires there, and they need to take that into consideration.
Wayne?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dave, does the state do this, or do they say contract with MetroCard?
No, I believe they do it with their traffic division out of Detroit Lakes.
Thank you. Move to approve?
Second approval.
Motion on the second. Any further discussion? Hearing and all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sayin', motion carries.
David, before you run, I do have a couple of questions. I talked to some farmers towards the Barnesville area and with the rain that we had.
Yep.
It seems to be there's a few culverts slash ditches that, because of the 52 project, maybe need to be cleaned out or smoothed out just a little bit. It wasn't really an issue when it was dry, but when we got that big burst of rain.
Sure.
If you want to just have somebody run check on that and just make sure we're smooth on those.
Is it right along 52?
It sounded like it.
Okay, yeah, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Maybe I just want to give a little, little update, maybe, on the boat property. That's that flood buyout that we, we let quotes on that. American Enterprises is currently doing the work. In fact, I think they may be done today. So, just a little heads up that the, there is one existing garage that was on site. It's been, four or five loads was knocked down and hauled out. All the concrete was taken out. They pumped out the basement, and there was no asbestos in there, which was good. So, that's all done. The well is in the process of being sealed, and the roadway is being obliterated, and the gate's being moved. And I think for the most part, it's about 95-plus percent done, so. Give you a heads up. Everything went really good. No overruns, no unexpected. Part of the federal process was an archaeology, archaeologist had to be on site, which they were yesterday, and there again, they didn't find anything, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Okay, committee reports. Wayne?
On Thursday, September 10th, local advisory council of Childers Mental Health. General business, the local advisory council is now on the county website. Much of the local advisory council's information is now available. Brochures, participating groups, and work plan, among other things. We discussed transportation concerns. It remains a primary issue. Went over the local advisory council's 2015, 2015 work plan, and that goes from September 1st, 192015, to August 31st, 2016. Then, we had agency reports from Clay County Social Services, Clay County Collaborative, Juvenile Detention Center, and from Solutions. And that's the only meeting I had.
Mr. Chair. Thank you. Frank?
Yeah, I guess it was Tuesday or, Wednesday, I went to a retirement seminar. I'm planning on retirement, so, no.
Let me tell you what that's like.
No, they held a retirement center for employees. Was that just county employees, or was that for-
For the whole area.
For the whole area, I mean.
For the whole people.
I really want to thank you, whoever started that thing. That's a great thing that we do that for our employees, to give them information on retirement. I sat through that thing, and that was a very good program. I mean, good information for them, you know? So, I think we need to do that for our employees. And I want to thank you for doing that, if you were in charge of it, you know? There was a good session. The guy who gave it was informative and knew what he was talking about. Also, after the meeting last week, highway backing, there we talked about, we're still talking about a building for the whole area. They already discussed whether to combine that building with solid waste or whatever. We're just still looking for a site. We're looking, possibly looking at the solid way at the transfer station or whatever is our solid waste there. So, may, maybe do a combination there. And also, we're looking at moving up some projects on Wall Street and County State, State 8 Highway Number 6, looking at moving those projects up a little bit, because there, I guess Dave found some extra money laying around somewhere, you know?
I'll be able to explain that.
Yeah, very good. Thursday, I went on, the Soil and Water Conservation District had a tour that they gave. You know, they invited farmers, and they well invited everybody to give that tour, you know? And that was really, that was a good tour. I've gone on them several years, but they had a really good one this year. They gave a wheat, that wheat barrier demonstration. In fact, they went and did some of it. They got on the tractor and showed how they do that, then lay that wheat barrier down. And that was just a very good demonstration, and it only showed how good the wheat barrier is, but how hard those guys are working in this soil and water conservation. It's not just sitting behind desks, you know, doing some projects or whatever, you know? They, I mean, they have to get out there and work there. That's, I don't know. I guess I couldn't handle that anymore when I saw Lynn there working behind that, working on that wheat barrier thing. They also showed how much the soil and water conservation, the watershed is doing in the county to move water. You know, they showed some projects of what they're doing. They care of erosion and stuff like that. And they did a good job of explaining all their projects that they're doing in the county. I think we went through about seven, eight different sites, you know? And it's also one thing I found was sort of interesting was, you know, when we're looking at trying to store water for this flood diversion and stuff like that, you know? We can't store water on all these grasses that we have out there. Minnesota, the state of Minnesota won't let us store water. I mean, it'd be a good place to store some of that water, but we can't store it on, on the wetlands or the grasslands, the native lands. You can't store it on that. So, it's just sort of, it'd be an ideal place to store, but we can't store it there because of some regulations. And I don't know whether we should look at changing that or what, you know? I mean, we're looking at storing it, farmers, and, I mean, I'm probably getting into something I don't know enough about, but it sure made sense to me. Why are these wetlands? Because they're lower lands, you know? That's why they're wetlands, you know? And, but we can't store any water on there. But it's a very good compliment to soil and water. Kevin and his staff, they did a great job on it. That's all. Thanks, Frank.
Ken?
Last week, I met with members of the Cass Clay Food Systems Advisory. Part of what that council does is we look at community gardens, and community gardens aren't specifically named in the Clay County ordinances. And if we don't specifically name it, it's kind of hard to be on a committee that helps to generate them. So, I did meet with some people and Tim to maybe start the process to put together some verbiage for us, so we may be seeing that later on down the road. But I had some conflicts this week, so that was my only committee report.
Thank you. Kevin?
Okay, I wanted to just do a little bit of follow-up on, on Mr. Gross's discussion regarding our highway tracking. The, you know, the issue is pretty much where, where will we relocate our new Harley shop at some point in time when that is done? And I think, Jenny, I think one of the things that, I think most of this is going to change slightly the service area of your district. And, you know, so I would encourage, before we do go through this, I would encourage you to maybe talk to Dave and to Brian. And we, you know, because we have these committees where we have limited ability to be there, we certainly hope that you would review that. One of the primary things that we've been trying to be sure of is there would, there would be no interruption in service. But we're just trying to find the most logical place to put this new building. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that we could, that could benefit the county by combining it with solid waste. You know, there's a lot of efficiencies that could happen there, and we, and our staff believes there wouldn't be any significant change in service to the area. But I would encourage you to maybe talk with Dave on that and get your input on that before we make any decision or recommendation. Then, the, the other thing on the, on the, about bringing up these two projects, originally, we had talked about, now that, now that the state has finalized, so that the final phase of the Oakport Flood Protection Project is going to be in place, which is going to be the reconstruction of County, or County 1. Dave was really hoping then at the same, at the same time, we could incorporate the Millan overlay of 22. And, but that would require still us coming up with some extra funds. And at the time, and this discussion was, well, then, this County Road 6 is also important to do. And so, we had asked through our Highway Tracking Committee to, and at the time, we knew of funds to maybe do one of the two. And so, we asked our engineers to come up with, give us a recommendation on prioritizing which one. I didn't want to get into the politics, whether it's mine or Jenny's district that gets it, but which one do they, but if you recall with the bonding thing in the report that Dave gave us here last week on the savings and the bonding, we actually, they actually, we actually believe we can do both projects, which is really good news. It's not finalized yet. We've still, we're still asking for a little bit more detail. I believe what he did say is that the, the County Road 6 project would, would go over a two-year period. There'd be the grading and everything the one year, and then surface the next year, which, and we've done that in many, we did it on County Road 18 right out here this last year. And it actually makes for a better road if you can put up with it. So, so that's, that's where the money's basically coming from. It's coming from, you know, that $2.8 million thing that Dave talked about that we had in the savings, helped, helped do that. Then, I also had the, you know, public outreach meeting for the diversion authority. And at that meeting, we pretty much recapped a lot of presentations that were made during, during the past month. We are going to incorporate the, or we are going to have a presentation brought to our board regarding that Triple P, the project that, private-public partnership that's talked about, and what the general talked about when he was here. And in addition to that, we're going to, hopefully, you're going to get a little update on, on the fmdiversion.com and all that, and how people can have access to information. And we're hoping we can get Minnesota residents to learn more about that. If they have questions, they can go to those sites. Then, the actual diversion authority meeting was, actually, it was non, pretty non-eventful. It was a very small one, because it happened just after the general's visit. I think it was probably one of our shortest meetings that we had. And there was no, as usual, we get an update on, on the lawsuit issues and the timing of those. And there was even nothing new to report on that, other than they authorized paying some bills. Then, this morning, we had a pick meeting, and we're looking at some comparatives within certain areas. And, and right now, we've, a presentation was given to us this morning, and we sent, we sent it back to Darren and Ryan for some more research. So, we'll kind of leave that at that, I guess. That's all I have.
Thank you. I had EDC, EDC Executive Committee meeting last week, and that was mainly staff reports and discussion on our budget for 2016. And I had pick committee this morning also, and Kevin reported on that. So, that's it for me. Brian?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Highway, Highway Tracking has already been reported on. I attended that as well. We had a planning meeting for the Senate Bonding Committee that'll be here September 29th at 6 o'clock. It's okay. And, and-
Yes, we were both there. We both-
Yes, yes. Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Wayland were there as well. So, we're trying to plan some strategy, because we're going to have a brief time to present the information. It's going to be the tour of the, of the facility, and then we'll have some brief comments to make. So, we certainly encourage you folks to attend that as well, if you would like to do that. So, we had, we had a planning meeting on that. I think we're getting our thoughts together really well on that. And then, Wednesday afternoon, left for the MACA Conference. That's the Minnesota Association of County Administrators. And also, the, Darren attended that with me as well, because it's also the Human Resource Directors. And we also had some competition down there with the Assistant County Attorneys, and some training down there as well. So, we saw them down there as well. But what ours was about, we had quite a lengthy session the first day on mediation skills in the workplace. How do you try to bring people's disagreements in the workplace to a positive resolution? And I think there were some good things taught there. And probably just the topic itself is a, is a positive one to remember, that people are going to have disagreements, as, as you five do on the board. But if you have them in a civil explanatory manner, you listen to the other people's explanation, understand where they're coming from. And I think that's a key to, to our workplace, that employees don't always come from the same environment when they leave home that morning, and different things set them off. And, and we have to be aware in the workplace of, of those, those factors, and, and try to deal with them as reasonable as we can. Staffing and hiring, recruitment, retention, and things was also another big topic of our conference. And we, that was the topic of our conversation this morning in our pick meeting, I guess. And we're seeing that around the country, frankly, and especially in the Midwest, you know, where we have had very positive results on unemployment. And we start wondering, how do we retain our people? How do we keep them on board? And the old question is, why do you want to work here? If you can go work someplace else, why do you want to work here? We need to know those reasons that people stay, because we want to retain them. It's expensive to hire people. It's expensive to go out and recruit people. And you've got six months to a year to get them up to where they need to be. So, we want to retain those people, and, and we talked about different ways of doing that and things. So, we had a business meeting down there as well, and, I guess that's about all we covered there. A couple of things that, one thing I wanted to touch on today, we didn't have the budget on the agenda, but Lori informed us, and she was checking on this with the city last time, is what the abatement amount's going to be. And just to refresh, not your, your folks' memory, but the public's, I guess, is the fact that you passed a resolution, as did the city of Moorhead and several of the other cities in the county, that they would offer a two-year abatement on new housing starts. In other words, for the first two years, that you would not pay any property taxes on the improvements that you make on your property. You'd still pay on the, on the, on the land, but not the improvements. And we've had some tremendous construction years, especially, I'll pick on Moorhead. And the city of Moorhead has had a, a real good growth. And the abatement for 2016 will be $389,600, which is an awful lot of money. So, you're abating that back to the people that have invested in a construction. And of course, the idea, and I know some will say, "Why should we pay their taxes?" But the idea was to spur growth within Clay County, and it appears like that has been, I'm sure, a part of the impetus why that has, that has happened. So, how we will do that, then, with your permission for next time, because you will have a resolution in front of you next time for a preliminary tax levy. And what we will do is, we will include that in there as an expense, and then also, we will place the revenues in there from the, the revenues over expended- there from the, the revenues over expenditures last year. So you exceeded your, your, your collections last year in different things, so we will include that in there. And then also, what your guidance was, that we should use four hundred thousand dollars of the additional revenues over expenditures last year to bring down that levy. And then we will include the adjustment that we talked about, and I provided an explanation on the Humane Society last time, so that will be excluded unless I hear differently. So any, any other comments, questions, inquiries about that?
Yeah, Mr. Michael, what did you just say about the Humane Society?
Well, I said last week, there was a consensus that we remove that unless we hear other discussions about it, so.
I don't recall. Maybe I misunderstood, but was there a consensus on this board?
Well, we were going to get more information, I think, and Ryan did send out some information on that, so.
Right.
But three of us voted to take it out.
Well, we didn't take it from a vote, did we?
No, you didn't.
Three of us were in favor of removing it last week.
Well, but.
Well, I've, I've read this here, and from what I read, I think it's very worthwhile for Clay County to continue it, however, that would take a majority vote of this board, and we'll do that probably next week.
Okay. Anything else, Brian?
Well, yes, and I did send you out a response from the DNR, and I also suggested in my email that this would be on the agenda for next week, although yesterday afternoon, I received a, another phone call from the owner of the property, and he said, well, have you heard anything from DNR? Where is, is that? I'm in a bind here. Do we, can we go look at properties? And I know the diversion authority, and, and what I'm talking about here is, there was a hardship case, and it came before you here, oh, a few weeks ago, and we agreed, or you agreed to send a letter to, I guess I signed it as well with the chair, to send it to the DNR asking for clarification on the lawsuit and their involvement in it. Could the diversion go forward with purchasing the property for this buyout? And like I said, they called me yesterday. I would have put this on the agenda for next week, but I don't expect you to have any formal votes on it or anything today, but just wanted some guidance on that. And you don't probably have the letter with you, but what the DNR is saying, and I, I think that their, their letter was really well-written. I, I have to give them an A-plus for, for, for writing on this. And I think they do understand the situation, and, and that came off in the letter as well. But then they say, therefore, Minnesota DNR is not in a position to provide the diversion authority or any of its members with legal advice, opinions, or consent of action under consideration by the diversion authority. Each governmental unit is individually responsible for determining the regulations. So in other words, they're not going to say yea or nay on this, and.
Until we do something.
Until you do something.
That's a problem.
And, and I know the diversion, we will have an advisory meeting Thursday morning again, an administrative advisory, so we will probably be discussing this in detail. But I know one of the options that had been talked about before is that if DNR takes this position, would Clay County be in a position to act on this as they did with the Voak property, and ask the diversion for reimbursement of such costs? Because again, these are, these are Clay County citizens, and the project has been approved and has been appraised, and they're waiting, they're hoping for a buyout so they can move on with their lives. Remember, the hardship cases was, they're a medical hardship, and the folks are, are in need of, of a move. So, and there's no market right now for that type of property. So anyway, any feedback on that, or I can report back to you next Tuesday, you know, tell the people that they have to be a little patient with us and, and go from there, so.
Well, I think we have to be careful with that, based on that letter from the DNR. I mean, there's a lawsuit going on. I, I, I don't know. I think we have to be very careful about taking any action that, you know, might create more problems, so.
Mr. Chair, I, I agree with that, and, you know, and I think it, I think they even gave chapter and verse as to where to go to look, as, as far as to find your answers or whether or not it's, it's, would be legal for us to do or not, but I wouldn't be in a position to vote for anything that would potentially have, have DNR come back on us again now and say we violated the, the EAS process. And, you know, Brian, there's, there's a, you know, hardship, and I, I certainly don't want to downplay the hardship issue because it's, it's real and it's significant. But I, I don't think we can compare it to that other property, because other property, property also had a potential.
Danger.
Danger liability issue along with it, that really was the cause for us to step in on a temporary basis and do it as a county. There's, you know, there's a significant difference between, between those two. So I, I don't, you know, if we can come up with some more, I don't, I don't know that we're going to be in a position, or if the diversion authority wants to hire some attorneys to tell us, can we or can't we, but I, I, I don't think they're going to touch that. I don't think they would.
Yeah, we may just have to wait until it's resolved, so.
Okay. I, I, and I know you folks do too have some compassion for these people, and, and I guess I think they're put in an awkward, awkward position, and I, I, so we'll, we'll, we'll struggle with hopefully some viable responses and maybe push the diversion a little bit on it too, so. We'll have a discussion Thursday morning about it. Also, I attended the pick meeting this morning, and then the PPP that you talked about is scheduled for next week, I think at eight forty-five, I think is the time we set for them, and we're going to set aside about a half hour for their presentation, and hopefully we'll answer most of your questions in regards to it, so. And with that, Mr. Chair, thank you for the opportunity to go for that con, go to that conference, and appreciate that, and.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Anything else for the board this morning?
I have one item, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Jenny?
Just to wrap up, an issue that's been lingering out there for some time, if you all recall, it's been about a year since we started the process with the Agassi Recreational Trail. If you recall, it stretches from Clay County to Polk County, and originally, the three counties owned the entire trail cooperatively, is probably the best way to say it. We didn't own a piece of it, we owned the whole thing, each county. And so about a year ago, because of some issues that the trail was having, the Joint Powers Board and the individual county boards voted to separate that trail into the parts that lie in each county, and then to have the counties own only their portion. So the wheels of justice or progress move somewhat slowly when we're talking about coordinating with all three of those counties. This board voted on that quite some time ago and signed off on the quitclaim deeds. We were then circulating them to Norman and Polk County, and I just received them back, or received Clay County's back at the end of last week. And so we'll record that, and we will officially own our Clay County piece, and the other counties will record their pieces, and that, so that transaction is done, and I have not heard anything, any critiques of that, or any difficulties that we've been having, because we have been proceeding, just maintaining that, just our individual county portion, seems to be going very smoothly. I don't know if Commissioner Gross has heard anything contrary to that. No?
I appreciate you working together.
So, so that's concluded.
So can I do, so the follow-up, so we're responsible for our portion of that trail, and are we, are we working with certain, with those clubs then?
Yeah.
And they're going to be the ones doing it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct. And I think Dave and the Highway Department's kind of coordinating or overseeing that, that process or that upkeep.
I couldn't quite remember the process.
And Mr. Chair, we've already received one payment from DNR for the maintenance of, of that trail. We have to be a sponsor for our five miles, and I signed that some time ago, I guess it was, I can't remember when that came in, but it was a while ago. It was a five thousand dollar payment that we received, so.
It's nice to have something completed. I have a long list of things to do, and it's very short what's been completed, but that, that one we finally worked through.
Anything else for the board this morning? Hearing none. We're adjourned.